One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everybody, and welcome. Things called to order, item number four.
I'll make a motion to recess the commissioners' meeting and open the salary board meeting. I'll second that.
Which my Christian Warren, send by Christian Arnold, to close, recess the commissioners' meeting and open the salary board. Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Okay, we go to the salary board at nine oh one. All are present. Item number three.
I'll make a motion to approve item number three, to approve the minutes of December fourteenth salary board meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion by Treasurer Miller, send by Christian Warren, to approve item three, the minutes of the salary board meeting from December fourteen. Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye.
I think.
And one exception.
I'll make a motion to approve item number four, is listed on the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Christian Warren, send by Treasurer Miller, to approve item four on the agenda, eliminate the Assistant Director of Public Safety Emergency Management position. Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Item five.
I'll make a motion to approve item number five, is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
All right, you need to make one change. Where is today? Today's what?
Eleven.
Today's eleven. We'll go back and fix that. Okay, motion by Treasurer Miller, send by Christian Warren, to approve item five on the agenda, to create the non-union full-time position, where it's management coordinator thirty-five thousand. Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Do you want to go back to item four? I need another motion to correct the date on that, should have been January eleventh.
I'll make a motion to amend my previous motion and make it January eleventh.
Are you good with that, Treasurer?
Yep, I'll second.
Okay. We're good with that? All in favor? Aye. So carried, that's fixed. Item six.
Make a motion to approve, item number, is listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, send by Christian Arnold, approve item six, set the salary non-union emergency management operations team officer at thirty-two thousand. Questions or comments? All in favor? Any public comment on the salary board? Yes, scoop.
Are these just changes due to, like, new state titles grant?
No, it's just kind of a little bit of a restructure. Same people, they're just changing titles and moving around a little bit.
Okay. I know sometimes in the past, we've had to, like,
Yeah.
remove and create positions based on what grants and operating things require.
Yeah, yeah. Just a little bit of a restructure.
Okay.
Okay, item eight.
Make a motion to close salary board and return to the commissioners' meeting.
I'll second.
Motion by Christian Warren, send by Treasurer Miller, to approve item eight, close the salary board and return to commissioners' meeting. All in favor? Aye. That was nine oh four. Now back to the commissioners' meeting, and we can bring that nine oh four. Item number five.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented with the addition of the motion that has a seminar request and/or payment for a seminar request. Needs a second. Arnold. And it was Commissioner Arnold that seconded it. Needs to be added.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, send by Christian Arnold, approve the minutes of December twenty-eighth with the following noted corrections. Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Item six.
Make a motion to approve, item number six, is listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, send by Christian Arnold, approve item six on the agenda, ratify approved filing cashes for Christmas electronic payments. Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Item seven.
Make a motion to approve, item number seven, is listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, send by Christian Arnold, approve item seven on the agenda, approve filing seminar requests and payment for seminars. Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. So carried. Item eight.
Make a motion to approve, item number eight, is listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, send by Christian Arnold, to approve item eight on the agenda, approve and ratify and approve the hiring of Mandy Houghton of New Milford to the opening part-time position corrections office. Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Item nine.
Make a motion to approve, item number nine, is listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, send by Christian Arnold, approve item nine on the agenda, acknowledge and regret the resignation of Detective George Geisler from the Office of District Attorney. Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. So carried. Item ten.
Make a motion to approve, item number ten, is listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, send by Christian Arnold, approve item ten on the agenda, approve transfer Robert Thatcher Jr. to the non-union full-time position of emergency management coordinator. Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Item eleven.
Make a motion to approve, item number eleven, is listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, send by Christian Arnold, approve item eleven on the agenda, approve transfer of Paul Johnson to emergency management operations and training officer. Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Item twelve.
Make a motion to approve, item number twelve, is listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, send by Christian Arnold, to approve item twelve on the agenda, to authorize the Tax Time Bureau to accept any pricing negotiated by Jason Miller, Tax Time Bureau Director, on each of the following properties as so listed. Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. So carried. Item thirteen.
Make a motion to approve, item number thirteen, is listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, send by Christian Arnold, approve item thirteen on the agenda, to sign the purchase service agreement between Susquehanna County Services for Children Youth and Hoffman Homes for Youth of Littlestown for a term of July first, two thousand sixteen through June third, two thousand seventeen. Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Item fourteen.
Make a motion to approve, item number fourteen, is listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, send by Christian Arnold, to approve item fourteen on the agenda, approve contract to Reed Generator Service LLC from Jackson for annual generator maintenance and related repairs necessary for the proper operation of standby power system. Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. So carried. Item fifteen.
Make a motion to approve, item number fifteen, is listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, send by Christian Arnold, to approve item fifteen, to appropriate fifty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars in accounting matching funds for the agricultural conservation easement purchases for the two thousand seventeen program there. Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Item sixteen.
Make a motion to approve, item number sixteen, is listed on our agenda. Second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, send by Christian Arnold, approve item sixteen on the agenda, to recognize Susquehanna County Criminal Justice Advisory Board as supported by the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency. Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. So carried. Seventeen.
Make a motion to approve, item number seventeen, is listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, send by Christian Arnold, to approve item seventeen, the reappointment of Stephen Torreje of Eric Township, William Owens of Clifford Township to the Economic Development Board. Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. So carried. Item eighteen.
Make a motion to approve, item number eighteen, is listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, send by Christian Arnold, to approve item eighteen on the agenda, to appoint Richard Ainge in the Milford Borough to the Economic Development Board for three-year term. Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye.
Make a motion to approve, item number nineteen, is listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, send by Christian Arnold, approve item nineteen on the agenda, appoint Brad Sebring of Bridgewater Township to Susquehanna County Fund State Extension Advisory Council. Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Item forty.
Make a motion to approve, item number twenty, is listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, send by Christian Arnold, approve item twenty on the agenda, to appoint Brad Sebring of Bridgewater Township to the Susquehanna County Agland Preservation Board for three-year term. Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Item twenty-one.
Make a motion to approve, item number twenty-one, is listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, send by Christian Arnold, to approve item twenty-one on the agenda, to award the bid for the refuse service to Joe's Dispensable Service Incorporated Holst in PA. Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Item forty-two.
Make a motion to recess the commissioners' meeting and open the retirement board meeting. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, send by Christian Arnold, to approve, to recess the commissioners' meeting and open the retirement board meeting. All in favor? Aye. Salary. Follow the order, nine eleven. Let's see, Chief Clerk, all are present. Item number three.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the April thirteenth, two thousand sixteen retirement board meeting. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, send by Christian Arnold, approve the minutes of the April thirteenth, two thousand six retirement board meeting. Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye.
Aye, sorry.
I'm lying, you're saying, right? Four ayes and one exception. Okay, item four.
I'll make a motion to set the regular rate of interest for two thousand seventeen at four percent to be credited to the member contribution accounts in the Susquehanna County Employee Retirement Plan.
I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, send by Treasurer Miller, to set the regular rate of interest for two thousand seventeen at four percent to be credited to the council in Susquehanna County Employee Retirement Fund. Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Any public comment on the retirement board? Okay, Chief Clerk, if you can read back the minutes for approval, please.
I will. Commissioner Hall called the meeting to order at nine eleven AM in the commissioners' meeting room. Present were Commissioners Hall, Sheldon Warren, Treasurer Miller, and Chief Clerk Adams. There's a motion by Commissioner Warren to approve the minutes of the April thirteenth, two thousand sixteen retirement board meeting, seconded by Commissioner Arnold. Votes were ayes, four abstained, Adams. Motion carried. Motion by Commissioner Warren to set the regular rate of interest for two thousand seventeen at four percent to be credited to the member contribution accounts in the Susquehanna County Employee Retirement Plan, seconded by Treasurer Miller. The ayes were unanimous, motion carried. There were no public comments.
You've heard the minutes. Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, Mr. Hall. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second on the minutes that were just read. Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Minutes are carried. Item eight.
Make a motion to close the retirement board meeting and return to the commissioners' meeting at nine thirteen. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, send by Christian Arnold, to close the retirement board and return to the commissioners' meeting. All in favor? Aye. Okay, we're back to the commissioners' meeting. And back at nine thirteen. Okay, public comment in the commissioners' meeting?
Okay. A municipality recently discussed that there's now a state law that allow the county to assess a fee that would go into, on mortgage filings, recording fees, that could go into a fund for lighted properties.
I believe it's a fifteen-dollar fee, additional fee for recording, and that will go into a separate fund for the removal of blighted properties. That's my understanding.
That was my understanding. I might have to really look into it.
We have not enacted anything yet. We have to review that and see what action we're going to take. My understanding from the information I received, that would probably bring in probably about forty thousand dollars a year to Susquehanna County. As far as, you know, what that will do, a single property to have removed can cost anywhere from fifteen to eighty thousand dollars, depending on what's there.
Right.
You know, it's not going to be where, it's going to be something that, oh, we're going to be able to rip down a hundred houses. It's not going to happen. So it's something that we have to look at and discuss and decide what we're going to do with it. We haven't done that yet. I'm still waiting to get a copy of the actual law itself to see what it looks like.
Okay. And I mean, I know there are some, several, at least one that I know of, that is quite active with removing blighted properties.
Right. We do do a lot through the Susquehanna County Housing Authority.
Which is where they receive, that municipality works through a lot.
Our pass-through money that goes to them, some of that is used to tear down blighted properties. I know they've torn down quite a few. Of course, we've torn down some through our FEMA money and, due to Lee and the floods that we had.
Right.
So we will keep you posted as we move forward.
Okay.
Any other public comment?
I have another motion.
She can do her other motion always.
All right, what do you got?
I'd like to make a motion to open for review the sealed bids for the excavating service that were due in the Chief Clerk's office by noon, January tenth, two thousand seventeen.
That was actually my question.
Oh, there you go. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion by Christian Warren, send by Christian Arnold, to open the sealed bids that were due in the county. All in favor? Aye. All right, this one is from Stony Mountain. And they only put numbers down on half the items. Kenrow. I'm not sure he's moving to move out. This is CB Excavating again. The lowest bid here, complete bid, is from, the bids were submitted by Stony Mountain, CB Excavating, and Guy Parish. And the lowest bid is Stony Mountain, CB Excavating, Guy Parish, and Kenrow. And Kenrow Excavating is the complete one with the lowest pricing. You want to word that?
I don't know, you guys read the others.
Either the answer is we either word it, or we move it to the solicitor for his review. What do you want to do?
Make a motion to send it to the solicitor for review. I'll second that.
Motion to move the bids to the solicitor for review, and seconded by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor? Aye. So carried. Any other public comment? You got anything else, Stacy?
He's pretty good right now.
Anybody else? Okay, in closing, I, we do have a couple gentlemen here from Johnson Controls. I've asked them, we have a construction meeting later today, I asked them to sit in, there's been some comments in the public made about the renovation projects that have gone on at the courthouse. And I basically say it's just misinformed people that are saying that what we're doing isn't legal and that, you know, we didn't bid the projects out. So I've asked these two gentlemen to come and explain the process to the public so they can understand what the county did is entirely legal and it's done across the state and it does have the state's blessing. So Nick Searasic, and if you'd like to
Sure. So, good morning, Nick Searasic of Johnson Controls, County Executive, David Bronner, our operations manager. By way of introduction, Johnson Controls, among other things, is a national leader in energy service, energy service company, something called performance contracting. It's done across the state, federal government, local government, state government. Here in Pennsylvania locally, we've done projects, Blue Ridge School District, Elk Lake School District, Wilkes-Barre. It's in a lot of local projects, also currently working with the state rehabbing the state police headquarters. And when we use the word performance contracting in the state, it's called Guaranteed Energy Savings Act. It's part of Title sixty-two Pennsylvania procurement law. So in preparation for coming up here, we reviewed, I reviewed, and the public has the commissioners' board meeting minutes from the last couple of years, we were formally selected through a competitive process in May of two thousand fourteen. I reviewed those records. That's all listed there in January, March of two thousand fourteen, there was a public advertisement for a request for qualifications that this board approved in June. Now that was the competitive process that enables an energy service company to work with, whether it's the state, a school district, or a county, or otherwise. Once we were selected in partnership with the county, we went out and secured bids for all the work, reviewed it with the county, and then those were subsequently, prior to us doing any actual work, that was also approved by the commissioners. And that occurred at a couple different meetings, because we've had different phases of work here. I guess one point of clarification the Commissioner Hall asked me to make was that the public procurement piece was the selection of Johnson Controls. And when we procure our subcontractors, we are not subject to the, to some form of public bidding. Although we did get the blessing of the county with who, and we did get competitive quotes, and reviewed who we were selecting prior to selecting with the county. So I guess that's my short spiel.
So, so Nick, on this last phase that we're doing now, my understanding is that you had pricing from how many different contractors?
I'll let Dave.
We had, we solicited about six general contractors to come in. We received three bids. Three bailed out. And, you know, we worked through the scope with each one of them to define what we needed and what the parameters were with Commissioner Hall and the board for what they required.
Yeah, one of the nice benefits of that is the county, through this process, the county actually has discretion on qualifying bidders, more so than they do in the normal process. So we actually got to talk about who we offered to bid the project, some of the pros and cons of them with the county, prior to that decision being made.
And also different products or equipment that we're using for that. Made sure that we didn't use any products or companies that had bad experience with the county or surrounding counties.
Can you talk a little bit about why performance contracting is advantageous for, especially on refurbs and remodels?
Well, speaking abstractly, in terms of the industry, performance contracting, the term performance contracting means that we are held accountable to the outcome of whatever we propose. So effectively, unlike other methods of procurement, there's not change orders unless there's changes in scope. We're liable for that. So if we find something, we discover something, that's our liability. That's number one. Number two in this method of doing work is we guarantee savings out into the future. So these projects are underpinned by saying, you know, we're going to save a hundred thousand dollars on your energy spend next year, hypothetically. And if the, if the project only saves ninety thousand dollars, Johnson Controls is liable to the county for the difference for ten, for that ten thousand dollars. So
Meaning that you'll write a check to them?
Yes.
We don't like to write checks, but if we have to, we will write a check.
Right.
And we have written checks to parties where we came up short before. Doesn't happen often, but we've done that throughout.
Absolutely. So as a part of this, there's a report that can be independently verified, that's done every year. It's called measurement and verification. It will provide the county to prove the outcome of the work that we're doing here.
And I would say one of the things that, that I, you know, that's part of the thing that we like about this, is the energy savings and getting the check if we don't make those energy savings. But the other issue, especially on the renovation projects, that I like this, is about the hidden costs that nobody knew about, that the county's not liable for. Now, true, if we make a change in the work scope or something like that, it's a change order, we have to pay that. But, you know, hidden costs, like in the first phase, I think it was close to a hundred thousand dollars in hidden costs that you guys ended up eating.
Yeah.
And I already know in this phase, you've already had some issues with the elevator that you're eating some costs on that.
We thought it was going to be twelve feet, just for instance. It turned out to be thirty feet. That cost was roughly in the neighborhood of forty thousand dollars, which is not borne on the county.
Right. So that's one of the nice things about the performance contracting for renovation jobs. You may not do the same thing on a brand-new construction project, but at least on a renovation job, you've got a sense of security that, you know, if there's cost overruns, you know, as long as the county hasn't made changes in the work scope, that those cost overruns are going to be eaten by the, by the performance contractors and not by the taxpayers. So that's what makes this very nice. And that's why this is used. I think you've got a big project now going in Philadelphia, though?
Yeah, yeah, it's in development. Should, that should be with the Philadelphia Housing and Shore Authority. I mean, that's targeted to be a hundred million dollar project, over fifty-six different sites and fourteen thousand homes, so. It's a, and the state itself is, has multiple procurements out. Thaddeus Stevens, Department of General Services, it's actually under a property in assets that's being managed. But they have, like I said, we did, did the state police, it's currently under renovation Dallas, State Correction Institute of Dallas. Under this program, they did, I think, forty-five million dollars down here in Dallas, so it wasn't with JCI, it was a competitor. Thaddeus Stevens College, State Capitol, it's a large program with the state that's running right now.
Yeah, we've also secured thirty-eight communities in the four counties, Bucks, Montgomery, Chester, and Delaware County, where we'll be replacing approximately thirty-five thousand streetlights with LED, upgrading all of that.
Yeah, it's a very, I mean, it's a very prolific program.
And you did, and you did work for Elplake School, Blue Ridge School, a couple other ones, you did Scranton.
We did Pittston, we did Wilkes-Barre.
Right. And it's all under the same process, the same
Correct.
And I think that what people kind of have lost track of, in the old days, what we would do as a county is, you know, we'd hire an architect, we'd hire an engineer, you know, we'd go through all the design work, and then we'd, we'd go through the process of hiring a construction manager and hiring consultants to take and bid all this stuff out and do all that work ourselves. This is a process where we don't have to do this. You know, we go out, we, we put a bid out for a performance contractor, we, we get a performance contractor, then the performance contractor, under the state law, has the ability to go out and do the bidding and getting the pricing and bringing it back, which saves us, again, a whole ton of money and a lot of time and a lot of inexperience. So, you know, let's face facts, you know, we don't have a staff of people here that are construction managers or engineers or architects that can oversee these kinds of projects. The performance contracting company has people on site almost every day, if not every day, to make sure the project's running smooth and on site. They also are very reachable and have solved every problem that we've come up with and come and have meetings with us every couple weeks as we request. And, you know, one of the big positives is they have schedules. You know, I just got done talking to somebody with the, with a project that's going on with the, with the library, the new library, they've been in that for months now, and they still don't have a schedule as to when anything's going to get done or get finished. They have a finish date by the contract, but there's no schedules in it as to when anything's getting done. So that's an advantage we have with these gentlemen and their company, is we have, every meeting we come to, they have a schedule, it's updated, and we review it to make sure we're on track and everything's going good. So those are, those are some of the positives that I wanted to get back out to the public. Like I said, unfortunately, there's some people grumbling in the public because they're either the old school, they don't understand the processes now and the, and the options that we have. They think that, you know, everything has to be bid out in the local paper, and that's not the case anymore, just like we do with the repair work on our cars goes to not the case anymore, just like we do with the repair work on our cars goes to a shop that's on a state bid system. We get state pricing on that, so we don't have to bid that out because, you know, nobody, you can't get an oil change for the price that we're getting an oil change for. It's just ridiculously low. We buy a lot of furniture and other stuff through the Co-Stars program now, which allows us not to have to bid out. Co-Stars is another state-sponsored program. It goes through their general services, they approve these programs, so that we can purchase without having to bid basically a competitive price that the state, that they guarantee the state. Now, the advantage of the Co-Stars over the state bid pricing, state bid pricing, we can't negotiate, the state's already negotiated at Co-Stars, although it's a approved pricing through the state, we don't have to bid it or negotiate it, we have the right to negotiate a Co-Stars pricing. So, like in the last one we just did for some furniture, we, the Commissioners negotiated that, and we saved an additional two, three thousand dollars off the price on the furniture, on the Co-Stars program by negotiating that, the Commissioners did. So, so there are lots of different programs now. It's a lot different than it was twenty years ago. And basically, these programs are here to, to make, make it more cost-effective and to, to get a better bang for the taxpayers' dollars, so that we're not wasting dollars on things that we don't need to do. So, anything else?
No.
Does anybody have any questions? I know Stacy, you did, go ahead.
So, since we have them here, do we have a, a finish date for the, the addition and for when we're moving the magistrate's office?
I can tell you that on the magistrates, what we're waiting for right now is the furniture delivery. That's slated to be the end of this month. So, our goal hopefully will be at the end of this month to move that. Once we get a firm date, we are going to put an ad in the paper, ask Commissioners to alert the public that the magistrate's office has moved. There'll be new signage put up for the magistrate's office, and that way, people will know when that will take place. I expect either at the end of this month or the first part of February is when that'll be up and be operational, the magistrate's. And as far as the, the work on the side-
So, the work, the work on the side is we are looking to be into punchless mode the first week of April. So, basically, construction will be done, we'll be punching the place out and moving, can be shortly right after that.
Okay.
That's where we're tracking to now. Everybody knows we do, may have weather issues, but we'll work through them as best we can. So, we've got a load of joyce coming in today. So, we'll be looking through that.
And we still have assessment down in-
Right. Assessment will come back as soon as the main, the new main entrance, which will be on the side, once that opens up by the first of April, we will move assessment back on site. And of course, that way, the elevator will be there so that everybody can get to all the floors. You know, and that's the whole purpose of this project, as this second phase started, was first of all, we have people in basement and cause it's working. The second issue we had was we are not handicap accessible. It's irritating to me that we have to strap somebody to a stretcher and drag them up the stairs to get them to courtroom two, that we haven't thought enough of our people that have ADA issues, that we have never put an elevator in out there. So, an elevator is going in to make us compliant, which is a big deal, because not being compliant would make a possibility for lawsuits against the county for not being compliant. So, that will resolve that issue and hopefully save the taxpayers a ton of money in the future, as well as providing the services that we should be providing to our people with special needs.
Yeah, just for reference, the elevator, while it's only three floors, it has eight stops. So, there's a lot of working through on elevations that had to, and to make sure we hit every single level. One of Commissioners Hall's first was we need to get the courtroom two, and I said, I don't know if we can do that, but we did it.
It's one of the biggest challenges on the project, that is for sure. Yep.
And that's the problem between the three different buildings here, the main courthouse, the area that the Sheriff's Department's in, which used to be the old fire station, and then the Warner Building, which used to be the old school, is that they were never built on the same level. They all have different elevations to them, which is, which causes the big problem. And to be, and to me-
I went to school there. I'm like, we had classrooms at various-
Right.
...levels and nooks and crannies and, and stuff.
Right.
So, I understand that.
It will, it will, you know, increase the ability for people to be able to come into the courthouse and be able to access the courthouse and get in without, you know, a lot of issues trying to get from one floor to the next floor. And a lot of this, you know, what we, what we face in this project is, is when you take a facility this size and you try to do these projects, you then have to, and when you do these types of work, you have to become compliant with the new regulations, new, new code for enforcement rules and laws and regulations. And some of those things can be very heartburning as far as trying to make them work within the budget and trying to make sure that we can do the things we want to do. You know, we're faced today with an issue in the courtroom right now trying to fix this emergency exit outside, which will cost a little over a hundred thousand dollars to, to fix. If you remember, that's the one that Judge Siemens fell through because it's all rotted out. It's ready to fall down. I would hate to see, if we ran fifty people out of the courtroom out of that staircase, I probably, I don't know if it's handled that way. And so, we have to get it fixed before somebody gets killed on it. The problem we're facing is, again, the regulations and the number of easements, or the number of exits out of the courtroom to, to be able to handle the number of people that courtroom can hold. And trying to make it so that we can stay within code, you know, one of the options was that they wanted to take part of the courtroom out and put another exit out of the side of the courtroom, and of course, we don't want to do that. Courtroom is very historical, it's, you know, very special to a lot of people, and we want to keep that integrity. And we have to find a way to come up with ideas to make this work while we still try and make the code. Because code doesn't really care about the old building and what it is. Code cares about that your aisles are a certain width, you have, your doorways are minimum thirty-six inches, your hallways are four to five feet, you know, and of course, when you have a building that's two hundred years old, you don't have those things. We have some doors that are like twenty-six inches and twenty-eight inches, and, you know, that poses some challenges.
We will have an answer today. We have codes coming and the architect.
Right.
So, then that leads to the question of, once the magistrate moves, has the county looked into what's going to happen with the old jail?
No, we haven't. That's a discussion we haven't had. We did have a person that works with the, and I can't remember what organization, out of Washington DC, works with historical buildings and historical documents, came and looked at it and basically gave his opinion verbally, but we have had architects look at it, and give us their opinion, but as far as getting a written opinion in writing, we haven't done that yet, that'll be the next step we'll have to do. Once we get the place vacated so we can go in and review it all, will be to have someone go in and review the facility and then make a recommendation as to what should be done.
And didn't the library, though, didn't they do, have a, an architect look at the building and make a recommendation? I'm not sure if that was a written one or not, but that might be a nice base starting point.
Who was that, one?
Maybe '04 to '08 or something, I thought so.
So, it, it was, I mean, it still might give you a nice base, so.
Well, if it's from '04 to '08, there's been a lot of difference-
Yeah.
-has occurred in that building since '04.
Right.
But again, it's a matter of getting the experts in, have them review it and make recommendations with the options as to, okay, these are the different things you can do with it, and what we can do with it. But I will tell you, the building itself, to me, once we can get those people out there, it's not inhabitable. Until major renovations or something's done.
I would like to say, going back to the construction, thank the public, and thank you to our employees for putting up with the confusion that we had and closing down the sidewalk and everything, and thank you to everybody. You know, it's been a bit inconvenient trying to find the Treasurer's Department to get dog licenses and pay taxes and whatnot, but it'll pay off, it's going to be beneficial in the end to everyone.
Any other public comment? Okay, I have a motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn. I second that.
Most of my Christian Warrens, and my Christian Arnold to adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. They are adjourned. Thank you very much, all, for attending.
Check if you want tomorrow.